Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman Hartburns.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bug.
Here.
Alderman Lopshy.
Here.
Alderman Jenkins.
Here.
Alderman O'Connor.
Here.
Mayor Urban.
Here. Please rise as we have a moment of silence in honor of our active servicemen and servicewomen as well as our veterans. Please remain standing as we say the pledge of allegiance to be followed by an invocation led by Alderman Hartburns. Moment of silence. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God, you are good and your mercy is enduring. We taste every day and we see how good you are. While we stand here as your lawmakers, and your word is clear and says you are to obey the law of the land, while we humbly stand and just ask you to continue to direct our path, we ask for God that you build the men and women of our armed forces, those that have served and those that are serving. We ask for God that you build the men and women of our police and fire, those that have served and those that are serving. We ask for God that you bless us individually, then we ask you, God, to turn around and bless us collectively. We ask of all your name. Amen.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, twenty-nineteen, City Council meeting? Motion made by Alderman Jenkins, second by Alderman Hartburns. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the June nineteenth, twenty-nineteen closed session? Motion made by Alderman Hartburns, second by Alderman Jenkins. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Is there a motion to approve the appointment of sergeant in orange for this meeting? Motion made by Alderman Hartburns, second by Alderman Jenkins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
Yes, we do, Mayor. Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city council for up to three minutes with a maximum of thirty minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the city council shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Clerk, will you call the first speaker on the agenda?
Mary Ann Vincent.
Ms. Vincent, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Urban and city council members, for the opportunity to speak tonight. Most people agree that laws are made to protect us. There is the letter of the law, which is the literal interpretation, and the spirit of the law, which is the intent of the law. A decision was made to evict nineteen men from registered sex offenders from Wayside Cross. Where would they go? If the, well, the nineteen men remaining at Wayside is much better for Aurora. Why, may you may ask? Will they have accountability? They have support groups? They have teaching, mentoring, they have jobs at Wayside and more. A web search showed that on July, as of July eighth, twenty-nineteen, two hundred sixty-six registered sex offenders live in the city of Aurora. Using that national average of thirty-five percent of RSOs who have child victims, fifty-three percent of two hundred sixty-six is thirty-nine. And that's what we're talking about here, is the RSOs who have child victims. If the nineteen are allowed to stay at Wayside Cross, then we only have one hundred twenty to keep an eye on, rather than having them, who knows where. Years ago, this hits me personally, years ago, a trusted person molested a child of ours. Many people don't know that because you don't go around discussing it. To give an idea of the impact, we had a son killed in a car accident in two thousand five. This is worse. Most parents think if you have a child die, that's the worst. Well, this is a far-reaching impact. Even so, I say, keep the nineteen men at Wayside, where they have structure, where they have mentoring, where they have a good environment. Wayside Cross Mission serves the community with the intent or spirit of the law, and that's keeping citizens safe. For men who complete the Wayside program, there's a twenty-five percent rate of recidivism. That's incredibly low, as you all know. In closing, I say, thank you. Please allow Wayside to continue its ninety years of success. In light of what I have shared with you, including our personal story, Mayor Urban, council members, I urge you to rescind the eviction notice for those nineteen men. Thank you.
Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Tyler Tardici.
Ms. Tardici, you have three minutes.
My name is John Cons. I'm here for Tyler. He couldn't make it tonight. Tyler asked me to come down and say a few words in support of the mission. I wasn't aware of the exact nature of the decision, but I have a few things, like to make a few remarks. I'm a thirty-year Aurora resident. I raised a family here on the near southeast side. A few years back, I retired from forty years at Fermilab. Before that, I volunteered at SciTech for about seven years, supporting their computing and networking efforts there. I also served on advisory panel here for the city, reviewing the original fiber optic network project, that's what I claim to fame here. As retirement was getting closer, I looked forward to devoting some time to things that would have significance. I was approached about an opportunity to mentor men who had committed to the program, the Master's Touch Program at Wayside Cross. I've served as a mentor to several men there over the past few years. Mentorship can be a short-term or a long-term commitment, and I've seen some guys come and stay in the program and leave after a few weeks or a few months. But I've also seen men who have persevered to complete the program to graduation and beyond, to transitioning to a steady job in their own place. This has been rewarding, and I hope that I've contributed to some encouragement to these men's lives, but without question, I've been on the receiving end because in many cases, I have seen the life-changing power of God at work in their lives, and it has changed me. These men are people just like me. Clearly, their life choices have been different than mine. But what we have in common, and I believe what we all have in common, is a desperate need for the forgiving and redeeming power of Jesus Christ. These men had problems and sin, and in many cases, was plain for the world to see. They may have been incarcerated or totally defeated by an addiction. We, on the other hand, might have problems and sin that we can hide. I've seen a transformation in many of their lives into hard-working, honest, and trustworthy men. I believe that one of the biggest recipients of this program has been our community, and I would urge the council to recognize and continue to support the efforts and the results at Wayside, make every effort to support it as a valuable sanctuary and life-changing resource. Thank you.
Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Mike Mueller.
Mr. Mueller, you have three minutes.
Okay. I've been teaching dad's classes at Wayside Cross for the nine years now. As a result, I've gotten to know the guys there quite well. They're not proud of where they've been, especially the RSOs. The shame for their crime is much higher than the guy who bumped off the liquor store. That's why the recidivism rate is so much lower for them. Putting labels on them for past behavior may make us feel better, but it's unfair to them. No one likes past failures to be continually thrown in their face. Helping them is to everyone's advantage. Taking away their support system is a reckless risk. Are we willing to take the consequences for that as a city? It's just like the Stateville person that gets out, and then he looks at job applications, and they ask questions there, have you ever been convicted of a felony? We know what happens if you say yes, and we know what happens if you say no and you lie about it. You do if you do, and you do if you don't, you just don't get it. And then after two or three years, we wonder why they're bumping off liquor stores again, you know? So it's like, it's easy to see, you take away a support system, where does that stuff go? Wayside runs a tight ship, and it doesn't take a lot to get kicked out of there. There's guys who will tell you that. They keep very good eye on that. They don't need any more problems. No one wanted these twenty guys out ten, five, or ten years ago, so why now? That's the question we're wondering. And we have to wonder, what crimes have they been committing recently to bring this on? And it kind of reminds me of the movie La Miserable, where the guy did his time, and he got out, and the whole time, the police inspector's following you from town to town going, you haven't changed, people don't change, you'll never change, and I'm gonna throw you right back in when I catch you, and I'm gonna nail you. And I thought, well, that's encouraging. You know, how does that help? I just want to say simply, I'm proud of these guys for striving to fix their broken lives, and I stand with them. Thank you.
Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Jeff Moore.
Pastor Moore, you have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman, guests, my name is Jeff Moore, and for over twelve years, I have served as senior pastor of First Presbyterian Church here on the east side at Fourth and East Downer. I rise this evening to speak on behalf of Wayside Cross Ministries and to ask you to rescind the relocation order that was served to nineteen of its residents. Wayside Cross has been a servant to the city of Aurora for over ninety years, and it has seen life change in countless individuals through giving the hope of redemption, which is the second chance. Over the course of that long history, First Press has partnered with Wayside in myriad ways. Our men and women have served as Wayside's directors, teachers, mentors, and have supported the ministry financially. We are deeply connected. On June twenty-sixth, I found out about the eviction order moments after it happened, not because anyone from Wayside's leadership contacted me, but because a man who was part of our church family called me to say that his cherished place of residence and employment were going to be taken away in thirty short days. Through tears, I was told by him how hard it will be to find another place to live and to work. Do you know any of the nineteen men that this affects? I know four of them personally. They're part of our church. Here are my observations of them. They know the laws of the state better than any of us. They know where they can and cannot be. They know these things because they know that one slip will land them back in prison. At Wayside, they have voluntarily submitted to a program that provides community, accountability, mentoring, teaching, and the hope of life change. At Wayside, they have voluntarily submitted to supervision. At Wayside, they have voluntarily submitted to living in the light. They wish to lead quiet, reformed lives, and they just want to be left alone. So my question is, what sense does it make to evict nineteen men who have voluntarily submitted themselves to trying to be better? I understand the rationale of this, for this move is for enhanced public safety, and I'm all for safety. I have four children, we live in Aurora, and I want my kids to be safe. But how does evicting these men from their voluntary program add to public safety? If they were all child molesters, which some may be, but all are not, how does turning them out enhance our safety as a city? I would rather they be in supervision at Wayside than in someone's basement in the dark with no accountability. For nine decades, Wayside has been part of the solution in Aurora. They have reformed countless men and women. A family in my church is working on their fourth generation of being productive, good, upright citizens because of Wayside's influence in an addict's life sixty years ago, four generations. Wayside's ministry is a solution. It is not the problem. Surely, there is a better way to solve this. Thank you for your attention.
Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
John Vincent.
Mr. Vincent, you have three minutes.
Mayor Urban, City Council, thank you, and as Pastor Jeff said, I do believe there's a better way to do this, that everyone can live with. Mayor Urban, when you were campaigning, you talked about Planned Parenthood coming into town, which was deceptively, and you said people didn't have a voice at that time, which was true. They didn't hear us, and we didn't really feel, many of us didn't feel like we had a say. It was imposed upon us. Many of you that are still in the city council were there at the time, and we also were told at one time, well, now the building's built, it's operating, it's too late to do anything. So that irony hit me as I was thinking about this. Does the community have a voice now? I understand the need for safety. As my wife talked about, we've had this personally happen to our family. As I read, the police themselves say there are fewer incidences with RSOs than there are in the general public. The RSOs, I'm sorry, at Wayside, than there are in the general public. Wayside recently spent a number of years and millions of dollars upgrading and expanding their facility. This was done with approved construction permits by the city. The planning and zoning boards approved these plans. So now the RSO situation is an issue? Many of us know the men who are going to be impacted by this ruling. They've took, most of them have served time, they have the RSO label on them for the rest of their lives. They're trying to get their lives back together, hold jobs, and be productive members of society. This ruling will put them out in the street, maybe cost them their employment. Is that really what the city wants? Has anyone in the city council or has the mayor talked to any of those men that are going to be impacted by this, to find out what will happen to them if this goes through? Does it make our city safer? I doubt it. I don't think so. Does this ruling help them, the men impacted by this? I don't think that is the case either. Mayor Urban, City Council, hear our voices, the voices of these men, and I urge you to rescind the eviction notices.
Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Marjorie Logman.
Ms. Logman, you have three minutes.
Thank you. To the Aldermen, I am very opposed to Mayor's move against Wayside Cross Mission. I feel he has manipulated the law and used it for the purpose of vetting people who live near downtown. I do not see his intent being for safety. The record for Wayside is almost blameless, and I ask you to stand for righteousness over politics. Those of us that do not agree with the marginalization of people to make Aurora a popular place will make sure this is a campaign issue, as the council has made it one. Access fireworks, loud music, and noise in Aurora along with political upheaval are causing many of those not in the inner circle to have already moved or are looking to. Please move forward quickly with the Ethics Committee before election time and include campaign financing. Please consider your vote to make Aurora livable more than popular. To satisfaction, it's growing at a popular pace. To the Mayor, The Washington Spectator cites Dr. Hazith Padilla, who found that only four point three of sex offenders committed new offenses over five years compared to the forty to fifty percent often stated, and they do not have the advantages of Wayside. His article is titled Assessing the Real Risk of Sexually Violent Predators. The threat of danger is not as stated by the city. The city belongs to all of us, no matter who we are, not just the executives that you would like here. There is a move to change the law culture in Aurora and is not fair. As we celebrate Marie Wilkinson this weekend, I wonder what she would say about Wayside as she upheld so often the marginalized. The wisdom of the elders has been cherished by every culture for centuries. I hope, Mayor, your children do not hear you say that the elders' opinion does not matter, and you end up having them place you in one of the institutions as you age where your opinion really doesn't matter. I was put in that type of place and understand what it's like, but through the sovereignty of God and the fortitude of my character, I broke free, and I am here to tell you, we are relevant and give us respect as due. Thank you very much. I have flyers for Marie Wilkinson's event this weekend, and I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Jamie Becker.
Jamie Becker. Pastor Becker, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Sir Mayor. Mine's already made up. I'm not really sure what much I can say regards to what's gonna happen next. I do love the city, but just happened to be driving down New York Street today in Nazim Kari Park. To everyone who serves and works at Wayside, I honor you. As a fellow pastor who does the work of the kingdom, I'm grateful for what you do, and I believe in your work. You're doing what so many wouldn't. But I also understand that the city council has a mandate as well. The Christians that are present in the room, I just want to remind us with the word of God says, to me, it's still the highest authority. What God says in Romans, chapter thirteen, that we are solely subject to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except from God, and the authorities that exist are appointed by God. Therefore, whoever resists the authority resists the ordinance of God, and those who resist will bring judgment on themselves. I don't want to stop there, because I have a moment longer. Instead, the chapter previous just says this, repay no one evil for evil. Have regard for good things in the sight of all men, and if it is possible, as much as depends on you, that peaceably with all men. Do not overcome, or do not be overcome by evil, but overcome evil with good. I'd just like to put forward, Mr. Mayor, and to the Wayside Cross Ministry that is here, is I believe now more than ever, all of us can do something to right this wrong, whatever that wrong is exactly, to fix the issue, and as a minister, as a pastor, I want to make myself available to do what it takes, either help relocate or to fix the law of the land, whatever's necessary, so that we can do right for the city of Aurora, so that everyone continues to look on this city and see that we are still that beacon of light, that beacon of hope to the nations, who we are, to who we're called to be by God. This is still our mandate above all else. Thank you.
Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Joan Salms.
The Salms, you have two minutes.
Okay, the movie Unplanned will be showing at the Tilted Town Theater on Sunday, July twenty-seventh. There will be two showings, one at three a.m. and the second at five thirty. Attendance is free. I plan to attend. Hope to see you all there at one of the showings. Movie is centered around a woman who used to work for Planned Parenthood. Now, we all know violence can get to violence. Our family is directly violent names in movie theaters here in the U.S. and Canada. As all of you should recognize, division of moral issues does not bring about unity, it only increases division. I have added two quest releases to my statement. One is entitled, Police Investigate Death Threats to Movie Theater Owners Creating Pro-Life Film Unplanned in Canada. And the second, Canadian Movie Theater Cancels Unplanned After Abortion Advocate Threatened. Canadian Movie Theater canceled the showing of Unplanned this week, after reportedly received violent threats from abortion advocates. Film is based on the true story of Planned Parenthood director turned pro-life advocate named Kevin Johnson. Okay, one truth that cannot be overlooked or raised in the abortion issue is that it takes the life of a mother and dad's son and daughter. Now, I want to add a P.S. to that. Okay. We are going to take back Aurora for God. After the Pride Parade, the parade route was blessed with holy water, as were all the government buildings. The street running alongside Planned Parenthood has been blessed many times. I call it Holy Cross Avenue. Holy water blesses the edges of Planned Parenthood, and we are seeking baptism for those about to lose their life, that they will be baptized and go right to heaven, and I hope you think you will too. Thank you.
Clerk, can you call the next speaker?
Pastor Kevin Bedford.
Pastor Bedford, you have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor and councils and fellow citizens that are here, I want to address the fact that there clearly is diversity of thought within the faith community on this issue. I take a position in which I support the decision to relocate, but I also make that decision because, as a pastor, as a retired Navy chaplain, I've seen many times in cities that I've served where we have looked at the offenders, but we haven't also looked at what happens if there is something that goes wrong. I've had parishioners in my congregation, and we've seen this even within our own faith community, dealing with sex offenders. I just want us to think through that public safety is also ministry from our perspective. How do we provide and help relocate? How do we show compassion? That's also ministry. But it's not an either-or. And sometimes I hear one side of the story, and even if I bring a diverse opinion, as a clergy, people might say, well, pastor, aren't you not as compassionate? Pastor, aren't you not as understanding? Well, when you have to sit with a family, and they've also been the victim, it brings a different perspective. So I hope that we understand the diversity of thought in this decision, but I do support relocation. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, do we have any additional speakers?
No additional speakers, Mr. Mayor.
You know, before we go on to the consent agenda, I just had an issue that I think we gotta clear up some things. I see the media's over there writing feverishly, so I just want to make sure that they get the perspective of where the administration came from. First of all, in the newspaper articles concerning Wayside, it made for good writing to make it seem as though it was an issue of Wayside versus the city of Aurora. That's not the case. Actually, as far as I'm concerned, this has nothing to do with Wayside, the organization at all. This has everything to do with the city's and the police department's responsibility to notify, not evict, not provide eviction notice. No eviction notices from the city of Aurora were ever given. No eviction notice from the police department were ever given to the gentlemen, the people, the sex offenders at Wayside Cross Ministry. All that was given was a notice that they were now within five hundred feet of a park. A notice, not an eviction notice, just a notice. And that notice, at that time, if they continue to violate after the thirty days, the state's attorney would determine whether or not they violated mandatory law for them not to live in, within five hundred feet of where children play. Let's make no mistake, we're talking about convicted child molesters. Convicted child molesters. The law, state law, says convicted child molesters cannot live within five hundred feet of where children play. Simple as that. So this isn't an issue of Wayside versus the city. This is an issue of the law child offenders have to follow after they have been convicted of molesting children. So let's just be clear. All right? Did anyone in the council have anything to say? Clerk, will you now please read the consent agenda in full?
Item nineteen dash zero three seven three, a resolution authorizing the upgrade of the public safety and municipal radio system software, consoles, and UPS batteries for the Radio Shelter Repairers Corporation, Lynchburg, Virginia, for an agreement amount not to exceed seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents, and to extend the current warranty for an additional three years. Nineteen dash zero four three four, an ordinance granting a special use revision permit for social service agencies, charitable organizations, health-related facilities, and similar uses when not operated for pecuniary profit, six six three zero, use on the property located at five five zero Redwood Drive. Nineteen dash zero four three five, a resolution approving the final plan for Lot One of the Salvation Army subdivision located at five five zero Redwood Drive. Nineteen dash zero four three six, a resolution approving a final plan on Lot One of the Salvation Army subdivision located at five five zero Redwood Drive for social service agencies, charitable organizations, health-related facilities, and similar uses when not operated for pecuniary profit, six six three zero use. Six-six-three-zero use. Nineteen dash zero four four six, an ordinance amending Chapter Two, Article Three, Division Six, Section Two dash two-eight-five and Section Two dash two-eight-six C three of the Code of the City of Aurora pertaining to the duties of the Corporation Council and the Law Department. Nineteen dash zero four six one, a resolution authorizing the renewal of a three-year Forcepoint WebSense web filtering software subscription from CDW Government, Vernon Hills, Illinois, in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Nineteen dash zero four seven zero, a resolution authori- a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class E City of Aurora liquor licenses unofficially related to application from MyCasey Incorporated, doing business as MyCasey at fifteen eighteen East New York, Aurora, Illinois. Nineteen dash zero five zero zero, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class O City of Aurora liquor licenses unofficially related to application from Frontier Sea Banquets Incorporated, doing business as Frontier Sea Banquets, located at eight oh-two East Lake Street, Aurora, Illinois. Nineteen dash zero five zero one, a resolution accepting the improvements and maintenance security for four M self-storage improvements at sixteen seventy-five Montgomery Road. Nineteen dash zero five zero four, a resolution defining the settlement authority of the Corporation Council with respect to civil actions and claims made against the city and its officers and employees. Nineteen dash zero five two zero, a resolution approving the use of preservation funds for a historic preservation grant program and adopting new program guidelines. Nineteen dash zero five two four, a resolution to award the contract for the Century Lane Storm Sewer Extension Project to H Linden and Sons Sewer and Water Incorporated, seven-two-two East South Street, Unit D, Plano, Illinois, six-zero-five-four-five, in the amount of one hundred forty-two thousand, seven hundred forty-six dollars and zero cents. Nineteen dash zero five two seven, a resolution authorizing the purchase of specialized training for the Aurora Police Department Special Response Team and Neighborville Police Department Special Response Team for an amount not to exceed seventy-two thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty cents. Nineteen dash zero five two nine, a resolution to approve payment to Gerald Ford for various City of Aurora fleet automotive repairs for the remainder of twenty nineteen. Nineteen dash zero five three six, a resolution approving an agreement with Global Data Solutions for contracted services. Nineteen dash zero five four seven, an ordinance providing for the execution of an easement agreement between the City of Aurora and the Nycor Gas Company for the property located at four-twenty-one South River Street. Nineteen dash zero five four eight, an ordinance providing for the execution of an easement agreement between the City of Aurora and the Nycor Gas Company for the property located at three-twenty South River Street.
Second.
There's been a motion by, there's been a motion by Alderman Jenkins, second of Alderman. Harburns, are there any questions or motions to remove items from the consent agenda? There being no questions or motions, would a clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Mesiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Harburn?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lobshe?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Twelve A's.
Motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. Um, let's go on to unfinished business. Will the clerk please read the title of the ordinance under unfinished business?
Nineteen dash zero four nine eight, an ordinance amending Chapter Eight of the City of Aurora Code of Ordinances entitled Video Game.
There's been a motion by Alderman Harburn, second of Alderman Jenkins. I believe we have a presentation by Corporation Council, Assistant Corporation Council.
All right, I, um, as you know, we have, uh, video gaming licenses as of, uh, for this week. I wanted to, uh, do a brief presentation to discuss, uh, what the modifications are, um, and also discuss what was originally proposed, what changes, uh, were added in the Rules Administrative and Procedure Committee meeting, as well as, um, I've also made one minor addition after last week's committee of the whole. Um, so I'm just gonna very briefly go over the changes, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to address those. So first and foremost, um, state law governs video gaming terminals. And it's Illinois law that requires the establishment to have a valid state liquor license. Um, that's not just a city, uh, rule, it's also the state law. Um, there's only a few rare circumstances where an establishment doesn't serve alcohol and they're allowed to have a, uh, a gaming terminal license. That would be something like a truck stop. Um, but it's again very rare. Um, and in the city of Aurora and other ones, we, there, we have, we don't have those exceptions. We only allow video gaming terminals in where certain liquor licenses are, have already been granted. So as I already said, it, it, it's something that's governed by state law, but as a home rural municipality, we can go ahead and grant our own city, uh, licenses, as long as they do not conflict with the state licensing. Technically, if we wanted to, we could even prohibit, uh, video gaming licenses, but that's not what we've done here in Aurora. Currently, our city ordinance limits video gaming licenses, terminal, uh, video gaming terminal licenses, uh, by limiting them to only establishments holding A, B, E, or E-one liquor licenses. Our ordinance also limits the total number of gaming licenses that we issue. Um, it's currently at two hundred. We also regulate the density and the location of those licenses, and we limit the number of terminals an establishment can have to a total of five. Again, these are, uh, more limiting restrictions that the city of Aurora imposes on these licenses. So the current ordinance prohibits new gaming licenses from being issued to any establishment that is less than two thousand, six hundred and forty feet from an existing video gaming terminal license. Um, the fact of that is that you can't have more than one license within a half mile. The purpose of that is to prevent an oversaturation of gaming terminals. What, uh, what we've come across is that there are certain areas in certain circumstances where we may want to allow more than one license in a half mile area. That may be near the mall or ha- heavy retail areas where we don't think it would be detrimental to have more than one video gaming license in the area. The changes that we propose will allow for business owners to apply for a reduction in that half mile distance requirement. The application does not mean that the business will automatically be granted that reduction. It just allows them to apply for that exception. In doing so, um, applicants will apply for the distance reduction, but they must still meet all other requirements of a video gaming terminal license. The first step would be for applicants to, uh, it, submit an application, uh, to the city clerk, who would then submit that to review by an administrative hearing officer. Upon receiving that application, the city clerk will then notify the Alderman's office. This change was made in response to, uh, RAP's, uh, request that the Alderman's office be notified when these applications come in. Then Alderman or any other city representative will also have an opportunity to submit their information to the hearing officer, either in support or opposition of the distance reduction. Again, this was a change that was requested, uh, in, in the Rules Administration and Procedure Committee. So what will this hearing officer review? The hearing officer is gonna review the information submitted by both the applicant as well as city representatives. After reviewing the application and all the information that was submitted, the hearing officer is gonna make a finding. That finding will either be that a reduction would not detrimentally impact the existing video gaming licensee, nor would it have a detrimental impact on the surrounding community, or the hearing officer will make a finding that a reduction would detrimentally impact the existing video game licensee or the surrounding community. If the, if the finding is that they're, that such a reduction will not have a detrimental impact, then the liquor commissioner may grant the distance reduction. The other thing about, uh, this, uh, this amendment to the ordinance is that we very clearly outlined specific criteria for the hearing officer to consider. This allows it to be fair for all applicants. The factors that the hearing officer will consider are the type of activity to be conducted at the establishment, as well as the dates and the times of operation, the size of the applicant's business and the size of the existing gaming, gaming licensee's business, a report from the police regarding the location and any police activity at that business, the geography and location of the business, the extent to which the video gaming, gaming, the extent to which video gaming will be a significant focus of the applicant's business, the legal nature and history of this specific applicant, and finally, whether a gaming license has previously been issued at that location to a different owner or applicant. This, uh, is Section G. I just added this after last week's committee of the whole. Uh, this was meant to ad- to address the issue where a business is possibly sold. They had previously had a gaming license, um, the new owner is looking for a new application, uh, for a gaming license. Um, this, I believe, more specifically states that that will be considered as a factor in reviewing, uh, the distance reduction application. Again, um, the, all these changes are meant to give business owners the opportunity to at least apply for a business reduction. It doesn't automatically grant it, but at the same time, we have all these factors that protect, uh, the community and also protect the existing gaming, uh, lic- gaming license, licensees so that, uh, their business is not affected if we decide to grant that, uh, reduction in distance. Does that, does anyone have any questions?
I have a comment.
Alderman Locher.
Thanks for doing this. Great work. Um, excellent. Um, the thing I would say is that I brought up last time, and, uh, doing a little research, apparently it takes a while to get the license from the state, but, um, if someone wanted to sell their license or sell their business, um, the buyer would have to wait a hundred and twenty days. Even if they got their liquor license, they'd have to basically either rip out the gaming machines or put something over them, and, and people could go to a different place. It could affect the sale. Um, you know, we had the meeting last Tuesday, and then the, you know, it was like Fourth of July. I called several cities that had it, and, uh, one that called me back, um, was Elgin, and they said they don't have any waiting period. So, you know, I don't know what the others do, but, um, since we're changing the license, I would say that if someone wants to sell their business, that, uh, the hundred and twenty day waiting period, you know, they have to apply, this would be approved for a liquor license and a gaming license with the state and the city, but you really shouldn't have to wait a hundred and twenty days for the gaming license, in my opinion, 'cause it's gonna affect the sale of the business greatly.
So this, uh, section of the ordinance only discusses the reduction, the distance reduction. It doesn't address the overall, uh, waiting period or the overall application process for gaming. Um, but the other thing to consider though is that, um, in issuing the video gaming licenses, I believe the city does consider, um, the operation of the business. So the, the hundred and twenty day waiting period does allow the city to make sure that the business is, is operating a valid liquor license and that they're operating, um, in compliance with, with their license.
Clerk, just to make clear, that does not apply to existing businesses, is that correct?
The one hundred and twenty days, if they were to apply for a new license?
Is it existing business or a brand-new business in the city?
It's a brand-new business in the city that has the one hundred and day, twenty day waiting period. It would be for a brand-new liquor licensee applying for gaming, is my understanding.
And all that is, is that we would not issue a gaming license to, uh, a business unless they have already had their liquor license in good standing for a hundred and twenty days. They can apply sooner, but we were not gonna issue, not gonna issue the gaming license until they have been in existence for a hundred and twenty days. But again, that's more goes to a general video gaming application. The modifications we're making here are specific to a license, uh, a distance reduction.
Alderman Franco.
Who has the, uh, who determines the hundred and twenty days? The state or the city?
I believe they have to apply for a state liquor license first. Um, and then we use, I believe, the city grants this, the liquor license.
So the state has no requirement for a hundred and twenty days to have, uh, a gaming license?
The state does not have that requirement, but the state does require you to have a valid liquor license in order to have a gaming.
So once you get your liquor license, you can't apply for a gaming license in City of Aurora until you get your liquor license?
Anywhere you can't apply for a gaming license until you have a liquor license.
And if you were to apply in another city, for example, you could get your gaming license right away? Is that a possibility?
You, you, once you have your-
Liquor license.
Liquor license, yes.
So I brought it up because I know what you're saying is your, your, uh, that wasn't part of your purview for doing all this, but since we're amending the license, maybe now's the time to, 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 to fix, fix that as well. That's why I brought it up. So I would like to see that changed.
Alderman O'Connor.
I know the conversation came up last week. I didn't say anything at the time, but I think, uh, two things in regard to it. I, I think it's probably appropriate to look at the issue because of some of the points that you, you made all month in regard to, um, awaiting a long time in regard to the fulfillment of a, a business contract, and that plays a part in the negotiation of what you have there. But I think, number two, it's most appropriate to send it back or put it in the hands of the committee, uh, to look at that different aspect of the situation. I don't think it, good purpose is served on kind of, uh, amending and building and tacking on, uh, to the amendments without it being, or with the, the ordinance, without it, uh, being a little bit better reviewed. And, and if Elgin responded, I would be interested in knowing what the other cities do so that we could give enough time, uh, to understand what the procedure is otherwise before we proceed. I don't, I don't have a problem with the idea that we're trying to get to here, but I do think, just in our normal way of doing business, it's very appropriate. Let's work on this. Let's make a decision on this, which is an appropriate subject. Uh, let's ask the committee to, uh, take a look at that next section at that point and bring it back.
Alderman Franco.
I would agree with Alderman O'Connor. This was not under the purview, the four-month part. Um, and I knew how this came up because when we did this, I don't know, about a year ago, uh, there was a lot of confusion. We knew what we, where our intent was, but as I went to a planning commission meeting, they had no idea what their intent was. So this is good, it's in writing, there's still discretion involved, but at least there's bullet points on how discretion is determined. So this is a step going forward. If we wanted to address the four-month portion, I think that comes at a later time. It's worth, worth looking at, but I don't think it should hold this up at all.
Any other questions? All right, there's been a motion, the second clerk, can you call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Mesiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Harburn? Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug? Alderman Lobshe?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins? Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Twelve A's.
All right, motion carries. Uh, the ordinance is adopted. Sorry, sorry, go ahead.
Finish.
Uh, motion carries, ordinance is adopted, all right.
All right. Um, can I ask therefore that the, um, uh, review be made to be able to place this on the agenda for the, the, uh, the RAP committee?
Yes.
Or at the?
RAP.
RAP. I, I hate these acronyms. The only one you didn't create was for finance, and that's proper. It's finance. Thank you very much. Um, so that, you know, because I always think I have to sing something if I'm gonna send it back to RAP at that point, so, um, okay. All right, could we ask that that be placed on the, uh, next agenda for the, uh, the committee?
Yeah, it, I mean, do we need a motion for that?
Yes, 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 absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, let's go on to new business there. Motion to spin the rules, consider items under new business, a motion made by Alderman Hartburns, Second by Alderman, um, Seville. Um, will the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lobshi?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
All right, um, will you read the first, read the item, the first item under new business, clerk?
Nineteen dash zero five eight seven, a resolution approving the appointment of Deborah A. Landy to the Office of Assistant Corporation Counsel.
Been a motion by Alderman Hartburns, Second by Alderman Franco, are there any questions or discussion regarding this resolution? There being none, um, clerk, will you please call the rule?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco? Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug? Alderman Lobshi?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Twelve As.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Clerk, can you read the next? All right.
Nineteen dash zero five eight eight, a resolution approving the appointment of Marissa and Spencer to the Office of Assistant Corporation Counsel.
There's been a motion by Alderman Hartburns, Second by Alderman Franco, are there any questions or discussion regarding this resolution? There being no questions, will the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns? Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lobshi?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor? Twelve As.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Can you read the next item, clerk?
Nineteen dash zero five eight nine, a resolution approving the appointment of Jessica L. Kalal to the Office of Assistant Corporation Counsel.
Motion by Alderman Hartburns, Second by Alderman Franco, are there any questions or discussion regarding this resolution? There being no question, will the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns? Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lobshi?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Twelve As.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Welcome aboard all three. New council, new assistant corporation council. All right, um, there are no requests and referrals, um, there's been a motion to pay the bills by Alderman Hartburns, Second by Alderman Franco, are there any questions or discussions on the bills? Uh, will the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lobshi?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Twelve As.
All right, um, motion carries, bills are approved. There being no further business to come before the city council, we got a motion by, adjourned by Alderman Hartburns, Second by Alderman Franco, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.